Well, hello there. You're watching Offbeat Business TV or listening to the OBVM Network Podcast. I'm your host, Susan Hamilton, and today we're going to help the local business community understand why the school board matters to you in your local area and what's the difference between the school board and the State Board of Education? How do they work together? And what on earth does that mean? Should you be paying attention? Yeah, I think so. We'll be right back.
Welcome to Offbeat Business TV and the OBVM Network Podcast. CEO and host Susan Hamilton shares vital insights from local DFW leaders on successful life and business focused squarely on local family business. It's time for our nation to rise, and we'll do it through a vibrant local business sector that stands up for life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Ready to meet your advocates? Here's your host.
And we're back. Hello. Thank you for joining me today. I have got some really amazing women today that are standing up for your kids. We've got Jan Stell, District 5, and RISD running for that seat. We've got Sherri Clemmons running for District 2, and we've got Evelyn Brooks running for State Board of Education, District 14. How big is that district?
Oh, we have quite a few.
Oh, my goodness. Was that 10, like 10 counties?
So, yeah, about 19 counties.
Oh, 19 counties. My goodness. So, it's a lot. And so, when we're looking at education, we kind of, we hear some phrases. So, if you're going to the school board meetings, maybe you have heard these phrases. You've heard workforce pipeline. Maybe you've heard you're getting kids ready, college, career, military ready. Hmm, those things sound good, don't they? Don't you want your kids ready for those things? Well, what if what we understand about that might be a little bit different, right? So, do we want our kids ready to push the same button because industry needs it? And that's what jobs need? Or do we want our kids able to create the futures for their generation? What do you think?
Education is complex.
Yes.
I've got my masters. You've got to take them with a good foundation. Sometimes people look at the end result, but you've got to start with a foundation to build a home. And if it's not there, which is the basic reading, writing, and math, and I think we've gotten away from that. There's no way to predict what where things are going to be 10 or 12 years from now. But we all know that that beginning teacher, that beginning classroom is so important.
It is. I mean, those early, early years, I understand that maybe our numbers aren't looking that great.
Right. Our board and RISD is telling us that we only have 47% of our students on task in 3rd grade, and that's for reading. And we always think of Richardson as a blue ribbon school, if you want to use that term. They're hoping by 2024, after the school ends, that we'll get 60% of our children in 3rd grade reading on level.
Now, you know a thing or two about this, haven't you been a teacher?
I taught in Richardson. I taught at Brent Field, and I taught at Skyview. So, I've actually been in that 2nd, 4th grade area, which is again foundational.
Wow, wow. And I'm really thrilled that all of you have been teachers. Sherri, refresh my memory. Where have you been? What ages were you in?
So, I worked in the Head Start program as a program specialist first, then I taught 1st grade and 3rd grade in 40 ISD. And so, you know, same thing. I know the foundation is a huge part of every kid's future. And if we get away, we have gotten away from, from really laying that strong foundation for them. And, and that, that goal of 60%, I was just talking to Evelyn, why isn't that 100%? Why don't we really, if we say we care about every kid and we want to reach all kids, why are we saying that 60% is good enough? That is not okay with me. And I know it's not okay with those parents of those other percentage that aren't passing those tests.
Well, that's an interesting question. And I'm going to open a can of worms here because I watched your debate over at Burkner, and I saw it because I've got, well, there's yet another candidate in the race, and I'm hearing her name a lot in our, in our neighborhood. And you would be our, our representative on the board in Richardson. And I thought, well, what's she saying? She's basically saying that the reason that may be happening is because black and brown students are underprivileged, and there's bias in the testing. And so, that number is there because of their skin color.
Right.
I'm a little frustrated that I'm hearing that. Evelyn, what do you think about that type of a response?
You know, I think I have a lot to contribute to this conversation because I am a brown woman. And the beautiful thing about it is that as a teacher, we know that our children can, can do the unthinkable. The possibilities for all children are limitless. I can move over here and not even know the English language and succeed in this country. I could come with just the clothing on my back and still do well in this country, reach a dream, the pursuit of happiness and, and liberty. And we are not speaking this into our children. It is victimizing my people, and it is hurting us. It's hurting my community. And, you know, you look at the fragmented dilemma that not only the black community is in, but a lot of families, we're missing our fathers, we're overworked, and there's less time for, you know, just the interaction that we desire to have with our children. So, it's all the most important that when I send my child to school, I send them there to acquire all the skills that are necessary to be successful in life. I look at how even in history, because everybody is looking at history, we can go back and, and, you know, we were emancipated as, as blacks in the nation, and, and we left with the clothing on our back. But we served in Congress. We served in Senate, the Senate, and, and even during the times of oppression, we have been resilient. And as opposed to uplifting my people, we have been telling us, the message that we're telling children is, you can't. You're not good enough.
It's so mind-boggling to me because when I hear this, I'm hearing that black and brown children are underprivileged, and we're supposed to just, that's the way it is. Their test scores are low because they're underprivileged. I'm wondering why that has become such a mantra?
It's by design.
Especially in America. I mean, we expect maybe that mantra in India or, you know, someplace across the world, but not in America. We're the opportunity land where people want to come to be educated and to have the sky as the limit.
Would you agree that 100% is what you want? That should be your goal. You want everybody to be able to read and write and make sure. If that's our goal, then we're going to put those people in place that can help get it done. Yes? Isn't that what goals are for? I know in my business, that's what that means.
Yes.
If I have a goal, I'm going to now know how to execute it. Can't execute, just, I'll be ineffective if I don't have a goal, if I don't have, this is my objective. So, so those are some big challenges now. And we've got, we've had a lot of, really, the talking points in the media really kind of limit what we are, how effective we can be with our own communities. So, tell us a little bit, Sherri, about maybe some of the things that you might bring to the community when you're, it's hotly contested. Both of you have two. And how many are you running against?
One.
Yeah. So, I mean, you guys are all in the fight to support our kids.
Yeah, I think two things we have to look at. I keep honing in on our curriculum and technology usage. So, looking at the curriculum, are we, are we putting in curriculum that's producing educational outcomes for all students? And that has to happen from the board. And although as a board member, I can't make an actual decision on every piece of curriculum, I do have a responsibility to know exactly what is being taught in the schools because it's, it's so important. And I know that one of the, one of the things that our district has put in place is a, is a connecting cultures and a SCL, social emotional learning curriculum that's 25 minutes a day. And I would want to go in and ask questions, is this producing the outcomes that you want it to produce? Because if the goal is diversity, equity, and inclusion, is this doing that? And then also, is this giving us educational outcomes? And which is what the, the goal of public school is to teach our kids. And so, that, and then the overuse of technology, it's getting ridiculous. We have, you know, the one-to-one technology, why, why there's great benefits of it. My 8th grade daughter says that she doesn't pick up her pencil except for algebra. So, you know, she's not using her, her writing skills, and, and she's on her screen all day. And, and although the, the future and advancements of technology are great, and we want all of our kids to be career-ready and go to that next level, and we don't know what it's going to be in 12 years, all those things. But, but, you know, my kindergartner has an iPad that he has access to all day at school. And so, do I think that's the best way for him to pass these, these, these bars? And get reading and writing, and then the socialization too that he needs instead of staring at the screen? So, I think we've got to look at two of those things.
I'm just going to state the obvious. We are, they're testing alarms, and it's kind of surprising. I mean, you can't make this stuff up. We're having this important conversation.
Yes, yes.
And right now, our emergency systems are being tested. So, you know, bear with us a little bit on that. And thank you for understanding. I'm not quite certain how long that goes on because I would have thought that'd be over by now. You know, Evelyn, how much of this, that, what we're talking about here falls in the hands of the State Board of Education, and how much of that is, is really in a council's hands?
You know, I want to rewind just a little bit. Television's in our bedroom. Does that help us? Does it benefit us? Or does it help us to stay up later? Does it kind of distract us? Does it involve, does it impair our, our sleep time? Being on a computer, a gadget, iPad, Chromebook throughout a school day for unlimited hours for a student, is that beneficial? What are other things that are more beneficial, a more beneficial use of that time is what we have to ask ourselves? Is this the new vision that we really want? And is this the best we can do for our children? I, I say absolutely not. We used to go to a computer lab. I would take my students to a computer lab. And we would differentiate between this is the time for your computer and this technology. And then we would take them to a lab. This is time for science, a music course room. This is time for, for music. But when you integrate all of the courses on a gadget, they're missing so many other components. And what kind of technology do we need our students to learn, our children to learn in order to be college career-ready? Because we're not preparing them for either. And so, we need the sciences. We need the technology. We need the coding. We need all of the advantages and opportunities in order to make sure that they get the best jobs and have the greatest opportunity in this country. At the state level, what's so important about the state level is a foundation is everything. Our curriculum is only going to be as good as our standards. So, we have the opportunity to improve the standards, write the standards, and, and collaborate on that. There's a difference between a scientifically researched base standard where scientists have gone in and they have taken this control group, or they've taken amount, a certain amount of students, and they have given them the instruction, they have given them the materials, and they have them isolated, and they're able to observe the growth. They're able to see how long it takes them to master these skills. And are they prepared for the next grade level? Have they received the information they needed from the prior grade level? It's a spiral, and it is a scientific method. But when I come, and I don't have a good standard, I don't have that foundation. And then I'm going to have a publishing company, company come in and write a curriculum based off of these poor written standards. And I'm going to give this to the teacher, and this is what the teacher has to work with in order to make sure we're not ranking 47% in reading in, in the nation. It's not going to happen. So, at the state level, we do write standards in the TEACs that comes in. So, what are the essential, what's the essential knowledge and, and information that our students must master at, at every grade? And of course, you need enforced accountability with that. You know, the buzzword is, oh, we don't need the star. We don't need, need assessment. But in our careers, we're assessed. How well are we performing? It's all about performance. It's all about the bottom line. But we don't hold the same standard to our education, to our teachers, to our students. And then, you know, at the, at the, at the state board level, what is also important is the curriculum, the instructional materials that students can use. It's optional if we, you know, and some of us didn't know, it is optional. So, the board will provide the money for the, the materials should a district use the materials that they, as a board collectively, agree upon.
Well, that's fascinating. There's so much to this conversation. I'll tell you what, we're going to take a break, and we'll be right back with more about this because now it's time to tie this up in a bow for you.
My American dream is to help you stay healthy and energized so you can live your American dream.
Our American dream is equipping future generations of American dreamers.
My American dream is to protect my community so they can live their American dream.
My American dream is to bring you some spice and flavor to your life.
Our American dream is ensuring what's most valuable to you.
Our American dream is creating opportunities for healthcare providers so they can have their American dreams.
My American dream is serving our business community and advocating for all of your American dreams.
Interested in starting a podcast or TV show? Worried about what you'll say and how to keep it engaging? Think you'd like to be a guest on podcasts, radio, or TV shows? Hi, I'm Susan Hamilton, owner and founder of OBVM Network, and I would like to invite you to an OBVM Media Training to get the tools you need for a relaxed and polished performance you'll be proud to share. Our specialized training techniques include role play, voice training, and everything you need to deliver a confident, clear, and engaging interaction. Go to offbeatbusiness.com. Go to the calendar and register for a training that's convenient for you. Dates available now, 214-714-0495. All right, and we're back. You're watching Offbeat Business TV. I'm sitting here with School Board, Board of Trustees candidates and State Board of Education candidates. I've got Jan Stell, Sherri Clemmons, and Evelyn Brooks. And these women are in particular moving very powerfully. And if you're going to change what's going on with that school board to be a more productive board that is actually paying attention to the community and listening to the voice of the constituents, well, then you're probably going to, you probably can't do it one-off. You're probably going to need to lock arms and take a couple seats at a time. And I think that's a really brilliant strategy. I know you're doing that in Richardson. I fully support that. I think that's, that's wonderful. And I noticed, Evelyn, that you've got several people you've locked arms with as well that are going in and saying, hey, let's reevaluate what we're doing here. So, how does this matter to, to business? Because we talked a little bit about this workforce pipeline idea because we do need, and don't we know it? Don't we know it? Employment is the number one problem in our businesses, and it has been. This isn't new. It was before we decided to damage the community the way that we did. But now, what do we do? Because customer service tanked, baby. It tanked across the board.
Yes.
Our front line is, is our representation to our community. Soft skills really went down the toilet. And what about reading and writing? And can you put those numbers together and give me an accurate understanding of how these numbers work for this department? We're really struggling with that. And part of that has to do with the education that we're getting. If the idea is not to be creative thinkers, right, and, and to be problem solvers, what are we doing, right? So, it does matter to you. And folks, these, whether or not you've got children in the, in the community, in your, in your school board area, maybe your kids are grown, maybe they live in another community. It doesn't matter. These are the people that are going to be raised to, to hold positions, that run the cities, that run the corporations, that care for you while you are aging. Don't you think education is a big part of that? It is. I'm a Christian, and for me, it's this whole, I'm going to get what I need, and then I'm going to put it back out in the community. And I think in the absence of that, that motion, something's always got to be coming in, something's always got to be poured out. We're missing that. So, whether or not you have children in the school district, and by all means, especially if you do, show up at these meetings and start paying attention and get behind the candidates. If you don't know who they are, you can research this. And I have to say, you ladies have done a much better job on your website than I've seen before, all of you. That was a big complaint that I had as a constituent is I can't tell who to vote for because everybody's website looks exactly the same. Finally, finally, I'm seeing you guys pull away and go, no, this is what I sound like. And unless we're willing to do that, we're going to have a hard time rallying behind our representatives.
That's good.
So, yay, 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 yay. So, what do we need to know to work with you? How do we, how do we support? So, what are some of the challenges, maybe you could enlighten us that you're having in your particular candidacies?
Well, you're very limited. I mean, you don't have money to go on TV like someone does in a state race or something like that. So, you're raising your own money. You're creating, you know, with help, obviously, all your printed things. You don't have a huge, Sherri's more active in that than I am. So, you've, you've become a marketing person and, and then how to get the message out, how to meet with people, and, and it's fast. I mean, you, you sign up and you go, and all of a sudden, it's time to go vote. So, you've got a lot of places to be and people to meet. And thank heavens, I have a husband that can put signs out, you know, because there's, there's a lot of foot, foot moving during this time. It's exciting, but it's, you're a one-woman show or a one-man show.
It's a lot of work. A lot of work.
It's a lot. I keep saying I'm the tribute for, for, for my district, right? So, the Hunger Games analogy. But it's because I have all these families behind me that feel the same way I do. I mean, it's shocking when you talk to people about these numbers. They are shocked. And so, then they get on board pretty quickly because they know it affects their home value. It affects their kids or their grandkids' education, or, or the community's education, right, which affects our workforce. And so, we have to get that buy-in with people. I think doing the forums were, were great. We have some more coming up, and those are great ways to get to know the different candidates and what we stand for. And I, I've just been block walking a lot, and that has been super impactful because so many people, first, I love it because I'm meeting my neighbors. I should be doing this without running for school board, is meeting those neighbors. So kind, lots of older people that just, that just don't know. When you tell them these numbers, they are shocked, and they want better for all kids.
Share a little bit about the numbers. What are we looking at here? Because we saw, we heard one, one stat. Give us another one. What else are we looking at?
So, here we go. Percent of students completing Algebra I and meeting the standard on Algebra I before entering high school is only at 38% in Richardson ISD. So, that means, I mean, that's a huge proportion of our kids that aren't learning what they need to learn. And then again, that, that 47% of 3rd grade reading, that, that one hits home because I taught 3rd grade, and I can't imagine looking across my classroom and seeing that half my kids can't read on grade level. That is, that is mind-blowing. And, and it's not fair for all kids for us to think that that's okay. And, you know, I had a question at the forum the other night about how do we reach the lower-income kids, or how do we reach our black and brown students because the gap is widening in Richardson? And how do we do that? And I, I think, you know, I, we have to have a new board that's going to go in and ask these hard questions about curriculum, about, about technology. And then also, helping figure out how to support our teachers really well because they're overworked, and they're frustrated, and there's a lot of admin that they have to be doing. And then, and then a lot of them don't know how to run classrooms, and that's not their fault. They haven't been trained, and things are changing. And we, it's top-down, right? We've got to make sure our principals are very firm in discipline and, and back them up because our kids need, we know, as a mom, we know the boundary is super helpful for our kids. They need that in the classroom too. And so, you know, those are just some of the, the things that I want to go in and ask questions. And, and, you know, the, the people that are on the board now, it's, it's a newer board. The incumbent that I'm running against has been there for six years, and he's watched the decline happen. And he says his number one goal is educating all the kids, but he hasn't done it. And so, that's where, and that's going to be a big, I don't think anybody has beaten incumbent in Richardson ISD yet. So, I have a big, a big mountain to climb. And, but, but I think the momentum's growing. I know with both of us, the last few weeks with coffees and, and meet and greets and events that we've been having, people are starting to kind of pull away and know the differences between us. So...
Could I add on to that as well? I think, you know, what we have to understand, first of all, I really don't appreciate blacks, my people, being hijacked. The, you know, the name and everyone being an expert now. The reality is all kids can excel when given an excellent and quality education. That is it. All children are made and born the same.
That's right.
Regardless of the color of skin, I mean, that is such a small part of the totality of what we are dealing with here. What we are dealing with here is a shift in education that is revolutionary, that is nothing like this nation has ever seen before. And we can talk about these small distracting things, you know, everybody is on one side of the table. But the reality is this, if our students are not prepared in order to take the baton and run with it and lead this nation, we are in trouble. It's a dire need right now. These numbers mean we are failing our children. And, and what bothers me are the empty school board meetings. What bothers me is where are we? We're not showing up like we should. We're not showing up to city council, and we're not enforcing accountability. You have my child for six and a half hours plus more per day. I'm expecting you to produce something other than my child telling me about their color. Fine, that's beautiful. I need you to know something. I need you to be challenged. I need every classroom to look like a GT classroom. I need opportunities where we are hands-on, engaged, where we can bring in technology, not a computer, not a gadget, but something where our students are inventing and innovating and thinking outside the box, entrepreneurs. And, and what is the process to owning my own business and, and marketing something and coming up with a prototype for an idea? What happened to ideas? What happened to creativity? Our children are not robots. They are individuals, and they have beautiful differences that we should be celebrating as opposed to saying, you're black, you can't. Or our numbers are low. There's a lot of, of things that contribute to these numbers. Where are we? We're not dealing with the solutions.
I love what you're saying because if we go to, that's something that I think is so important. I want them to be familiar with my face. I want us to be filling up those seats because anybody that holds a council position needs to know we're watching them.
Yes.
Needs to know that we're leaning in, you know, you're not, we didn't put you there just to, now you don't like us anymore, you know? I don't, I don't, I don't want that, and I'm not willing to settle for that. Tell me this, Evelyn, when you're looking at what, at policies, because you are going to be, you create the TEACs or is that another group?
No, we do.
You create the TEACs at your level. So, if you, so the TEACs, explain, will you explain that acronym?
Yes. So, with the Texas Essential Skills and Knowledge.
Okay. So, you create that particular policy that then goes to the school boards, and the school boards then implement that. They, that's the, the policy that then they enforce now. So, each individual school also has opportunities to be creative in the way that they enforce those policies at that level. And that's in your, your neighborhood. That's your community. So, when I'm thinking about creativity and, you know, some people have this great, man, my, my husband's family, Connor, the one that, that runs the studio here, arts and, and music and instruments, and there's these, they're the creative minds that are just amazing. And I wonder sometimes when I look at our students and that, I don't see, I don't see recess the way it needs to be. I don't see art and music class or, you know, I'm, I made it a point to buy instruments for my family for Christmas because I thought you kids are going to start playing with something. Just be exposed to it. Just have them, have them. And, and not everybody can do that. So, I, I would love for us to find a way that we could all just contribute and make sure these kids had, had something that they can learn because it's great for the brain. It's great for math skills, right? Isn't math and music and instrument that all comes together to help develop those synapses? So, what do you, how, is that part of something that comes from the policy at the state board level that says, you know, let's get back to adding these pieces so the brain can expand in these ways?
Well, you know what I like? I really like autonomy and control. We can self-govern ourselves. So, at a local level, we have to understand that the ISD at the local level, it's ours, the people, the community. What does the community want? That is the, the voice that the Board of Trustees is saying, we are going to listen to your voice. If it's within the policies, it's, if it's in the amount of time, because yes, art is a, it's a program that we need in schools. Those are the standards. And, and we should look to our local communities to hold our, our local ISD boards accountable for the things that we want to see in our schools, the programs that we want to incorporate. Because all, you know, so as the board, like we, the, the board comes up with graduation requirements. What do I, what do the students need in order to graduate? But the beautiful thing of it is the ISD can go and create that and make that look like whatever you want it to look like. And I think we have, we, we are under the assumption that the board has the control. Our superintendent has the control. Our, our associations have the control.
We don't know who has the control.
We have the control. We, the people, the voters. And I tell you what a wonderful idea would be is for us to have to elect our superintendents. How about that? We elect you, the people.
Threaten me with a good time.
We would elect you, you know? You would not be elected by just a, a few percentage of, of people. So, there are some things we can do differently. I think we all work together. For, for me, what I envision is, is being in communication with all the ISDs in, in my particular region. Sure, we serve 5.3 million children who attend the public schools, but it's nice that it's broken down into the regions that it's broken down into so you can be in tune to the ISDs that you service that are underneath you. So, there's already ISDs. There's parents, and they, they communicate with me. Hey, this is going on in Mithlothian. This is going on in Watsachi. So, it's really a beautiful way to really take ownership for this particular group of people and say, hey, I hear your voice. I'm going to echo that at the State Board of Education. I'm going to make decisions that benefit our students. But the thing is, it's all of us together. So, it's, it's us working, you know? We, we have to hold our legislatures accountable. We have to hold our Commissioner of Education accountable, and it's all of us, not one, not two, but everybody.
We need to be educated on those roles. What do they mean? What do they do? What do they see? So, that's, that's my plea to you ladies here as you're, you're being bold to step into these positions. You're willing to fight for us. I appreciate that because in doing so, you're fighting for these kids. You're saying, I see these numbers, and I said, no. And that, that has my high five. Let's do something about it. I, I can't wait to see you hold those positions and really do it. We're going to have all of your websites in the description box below, but I'm going to go through and, and what, your website, would you like to mention that on air for anybody listening in transit? It's, that's fine. We may not remember. Because I don't know if you heard, heard it mentioned earlier, but she's doing all of her own marketing. There's only so much time in a day. There is a lot to do here. So, get behind your candidate, and you